Yes, I am calling the meeting to order. It is the Select Board Monday, June fifteenth, here at six. Thank you, John, for reminding me of that important fact. So, alright, Michelle, do you have, uh...
Yeah.
Alright.
Sorry, I'm back.
That's alright. What's up?
Uh, so I just wanted to talk about the Zoom subscription.
Okay.
And check in about that. Um, a library has a Zoom account, and I know the Planning Commission was interested, and maybe the DRB as well, and so I didn't know if the town was going to get a Zoom account where, you know, there'd be different hosts, and the library would be one host, and the Planning Commission would be another, or if libraries continue to have a separate account.
So, um, and I had Sasha look into this for me, um, this past week, and she sent me something here, um, right before we got on the, uh, the call, but maybe you can share with me, Michelle, or us. How, how does the, uh, the host account work? Is it possible that we could all use that one, or is it really not feasible? What, how does, what do you think?
So, my understanding of reading the, you know, Zoom rules online, so we have, um, we have one account, a pro account, with one host, and the library is the host, and it's fourteen ninety-nine. So each one of, each entity would be another host. So I know when the Planning Commission used our account, um, Cory set up the meeting, and she participated, she didn't participate in the meeting, but she was there. So it's, when I read it, I don't think, you can't, you can share an account, but you can't share hosts. So because we only have one host, we can't share beyond the library, because that would be a violation of the rule.
Sure, yep.
That, that's my understanding.
Okay. Well, then we will, uh, look into it. Sasha, did you find out anything different?
Uh, no, no. I think Michelle got a little bit further than I did.
Alright, so, um, we can check with, with Jonathan and, and John Riley, uh, and if there's still, uh, continued interest in wanting to, to host their meetings, um, with Zoom. Why don't you go ahead and, and bring that to the board next time, Sasha, or even before then. I don't think it's an awful lot, if it's something those guys want to get started on, uh, but...
Okay.
Just see what we can do as far as, uh, um, I guess the option with, with, uh, several hosts, and maybe we could, uh, get rid of the library's subscription if it's any cheaper to do it that way, with them as well.
Cool. We found it, we really liked, we, we meet via Zoom, and then Cory does programming. Uh, it's worked really well so far.
Yeah, I use it, um, for another, uh, for, for my work, and like I said, it's nice, especially if you want to share documents and such.
Yeah.
Um, it's a little bit easier, so, um, you know, I think if we're, depending on what we decide here, the board going forward, we will, we may, uh, take advantage of that as well.
Cool. Um, one more, one more quick thing that I wanted to tell you about was, we, um, voted at our last trustees meeting, we were gonna move five hundred dollars from our approved budget in the portable toilets line into the building maintenance fund line to cover some trash costs. Do you want me to send that change to you in writing, or can I just tell you? I mean, since you approved it, I want to let you know that we're moving money around. It's not gonna change the bottom line. How do you want me to handle that?
Yeah, I think if you guys have, um, made that decision, let us know, um, yeah, and we'll, we'll take care of that. I don't want to, um, eliminate those, those line items, or if we're moving the money around, I want to make sure that we're budgeting correctly going forward, so make...
Right.
Um, so that's, I just want to make sure we're not just throwing things around, and not, um, realizing where it's going or where it's from, uh, so we can budget correctly going, going forward.
Yeah, that makes sense. Normally, you know, we wouldn't move the money around, but the, the trash cost was unbudgeted, and then also the portable toilet cost, which we would've used, um, but we don't need to now because you are letting us stay in the town hall, is also un, so it seems like more representative of what we're doing to move it.
Sure. Alright, thank you for asking, though, for checking. Anything else, uh, with the library stuff?
I'm good. Jamie, are you on? Do you have anything?
I am on, and I was really just here in case you needed me, but sounds like everything is good, so, no, I don't have anything else.
What are you guys' plans to open? Jamie, or, um, Michelle?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Jamie.
I asked if, did you guys have plans to reopen, or what's going, going forward?
We do have a plan that is all laid out, different stages that we would be open, um, depending on, uh, various factors. Right now, I believe, waiting for, so the next stage, we would be open by appointment. We would continue curbside service. I think Cory is just waiting for some, um, TPE supplies, so that she'll be able to sanitize between, uh, patrons.
Alright, well, it sounds like, um, you guys are moving forward.
Yeah. We could, we could share that, um, plan with you, if you'd like.
Yeah, when you get it, just so that we're, we, uh, we know what's going on. I mean, I'm sure you're, you're doing to the codes, but just so we have it on record, that'd be good.
Yes, I'll take care of that.
Thank you very much. Alright, um, now, who else? Neil, I know you're here, but, you know, I'm gonna have you speak a little bit later, um, at Old Business, uh, 'cause I think what you, what you have is Old Business, it's kind of pulling out of the school district, what we had talked about before, which we have on our agenda as old tending business, so, um, is there anyone else here for general public comment?
I, yes, I believe that's me, Steve Robbins, um, and I'm here with my Moretown Recreation Committee here.
Hey, Steve, thanks.
Hey.
Hey, before you start, Steve, I'm just gonna hop off. Thank you so much for having us, and, uh, take care.
Alright, thank you, Michelle, for having us tonight.
Bye.
Bye, Michelle.
Bye, Michelle. So, Steve, go ahead, what's, uh, what's up?
I submitted a very short one pager to Sasha, um, to circulate to the board. I don't know if that made it through to y'all, um, and this could certainly be an agenda, um, going forward, but I thought it would, uh, it was worth, the committee sort of tasked me with bringing at least a couple things, um, to the board's mind that we've been kicking around for the last few months. Um, one is, um, we developed, and this is actually not, this is a little stale, we, over the course of a few meetings, um, over the winter, we developed a mission statement, but we realized that really, it's up to the Select Board always say what we are not, or are not, so these are for your considerations. Um, if you don't have it in front of you, I could read it, but hopefully there's a, there's a handout, um...
Yeah, I do not have that in front of me, um, but, and what I'd like, Steve, on, on that, and I don't know if, um, who has it, but this would be good, uh, a good topic to have as an agenda item, um, and...
Yep. Feel free to invite me back to a future meeting, and we can discuss this and all, any of this another time.
Yeah, um, not that I don't, in fact, I'd like to get your other idea out as well, but these are things what I'd like to see going forward, is, is to reach out to, reach out to Sasha and, uh, get on the agenda, so we, we know what you're, you're coming for, and, um, you know, and then just gives us a little bit of time, and, but more for, for other people out there wanting to know, you know, what's going on, um...
Yep, understood.
Yep.
That was my intent. Um, the other thing is, is field mowing, and there, and I'm sure we could come up with a, a longer list of things to discuss, but, uh, those were the two.
Alright.
The, the board should consider approving a mission statement, and also, um, our, I guess our opinion and our guidance on what we think a mowing, um, schedule could, could be.
So, so why don't we plan on our, at our next meeting, and Sasha, you can put Steve on, um, for our first guest at our next meeting, and we'll, we'll take a look at those mission statements, and, and, you know, plan, you know, twenty minutes, whether you say that between that, and talking about the fields, and if there's other things, you know, uh, that you want to send forward to discuss, that's fine as well.
Yes, I would ask Sasha if she can advance at least the, the one pager, um, and if there's other things, we can, we can develop a, you know, we can add, we could add to it.
Alright, is that fair?
So, um, will I get confirmation that, of, that, you know, I'm coming on a certain date at time, or?
Yeah, she will, uh...
Okay, sounds good.
Send it out to you, but plan on, our next meeting is, uh, gonna be the first week in July, uh, July, Monday the sixth.
I'm writing it down, seven, six.
So, uh, seven, six, and if you, you know, somewhere between six fifteen and six thirty.
Got it, I'll put it in my calendar.
And Sasha, you can put that as well?
Yep, I got it, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Steve, before you go...
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, this is John, um, I do also, uh, see who on, uh, the Rec Committee would like to be part of the Land Management Plan Committee that I'm trying to put together.
The Forestry Management Plan, for the town forests?
Right, yeah.
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't know that there was a subcommittee being formed, but sure, I can, I can, um, bring that up at our next meeting.
Yeah, that, uh...
You want, how many people you want from our, from our group?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think Chuck might've wanted to, but, but I, I don't know. Um, you know, Chuck and I discussed things back before COVID nineteen, and, and, uh, so I figured that we could probably start, um, you know, start going on, getting going on this, uh, the forest management plan, so...
Is this the new land?
Yes, I...
What's that?
John, is this the, that new land that we got?
No, 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 it's, it's the existing, because, um, that's the plan, actually, that was ten years ago, so that, that plan is, uh, has expired.
Oh.
Really just updating the plan, it's not, it's not a big deal.
And then, I, I think...
But I know when I bumped, I was gonna just ask Steve, 'cause when I, I bumped into him the other day, and we started talking, and we, what, what, isn't this new land that we got as well, right?
Well, that's gotta be a, a separate, separate item, I mean, that eventually will, will come also, but we have to get the access to it straightened out first.
Oh, I, see, I don't know anything about it, so I was just wondering what was going on with that.
Yep. And, and I'm, I'm gonna bring that up a little bit later, too.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I'll just weigh in one last moment, and that is, um, yes, we want to at least, you know, be part of the forestry plan. I had connected with a couple individual members of the Planning Commission to express the same, and they assured us that, yes, we, you know, we would at least be involved, so if the...
So that's, yeah, yeah.
If the reach out is to get a couple, um, members from our group to sit in on a subcommittee, I'm, I'm sure that won't be hard to get a couple folks to, um, do.
Okay.
Well, I say that, but, um, I'm sure there'll be some interest, so...
Okay, 'cause for me, of course, I have the hat of tree warden, and also of, uh, Select Board, so...
That's good.
So, I'm, I'm on their duel.
Yeah, 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 you're, you're critical, that's, that's great. You have, you have the, the long view of, of the whole project, so that's great.
Okay, good.
Anything else for Steve? Alright, so let's go ahead and move, move forward. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate your help, um...
Okay, guys, and girls, signing off, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I know.
So, uh, do we have anyone else on, uh, for general public comment? No, alright, so, not hearing any one speak up, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, and that is, uh, regarding the first constable position. Uh, so Mr. Chenet, um, certainly come off hold if you are, and, uh, first, thank you for, um, expressing interest in, in, in the job. Um, maybe you can tell us a little bit about yourself.
Absolutely. Hey, thanks for, thanks for having me on tonight. Um, so I am, uh, currently a police officer in Burlington. Uh, I'm a detective, I've got fifteen years on the job. Uh, I work in the Major Crimes Division, uh, which is mainly homicides, attempted homicides, um, major arson, you know, major, major violent crimes. Um, so I've, for a while now, been looking at different committees, and different, uh, boards, to possibly be on, because I've been, I've been trying to do some community service beyond, beyond my job, um, in my, the little spare time that I have. Um, and, you know, I talked to some of my neighbors, and I was aware that the, the constable position here was open, um, so it just seems like a, a good way that I can give back to the community that also fits my schedule, because I, I understand it to be mainly, uh, the service of civil paperwork, and that I can fit in certainly around my, around my nine to five.
Yeah, well, go ahead, skip.
Yeah, as far as background, uh, beyond that, I, um, I went to Castleton for my undergrad, uh, psychology is, is my background there. Um, I was also in the Guard, I deployed to Iraq back in two thousand and five, um, with a group out of Waterbury.
Nice.
Um...
Did you grow up in the Guard?
I, uh, I did, yes, I grew up in East Palm Hiller.
Alright.
Palm Hiller, and my wife and I have lived in Moretown since two thousand and seven. We built, uh, just off the river road. Actually, I can see Carolyn's house from, from, from here right now.
Alright, well, certainly I, uh, would welcome you on the board. Um, regarding most of it, like you said, and, and every once in a while, there's little papers to be served or such, um...
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything else as a, as a police officer, because you are licensed, that you, you can do within our town?
Well, I guess I could do, as far as police services?
Like, yeah.
Um, I could, I understand that each, each town really sets the boundaries for what a constable would, would do, um, and there are towns, like, like Mendon, for example, that, um, that use that constable position as a full-time law enforcement position, because every, every town is allotted, you know, to have at least one or two.
Yep.
Um, so they, you know, they, they paid to send an individual to go to the police academy, they, they get trained at the level, level two or three, um, and then they give them equipment, and have them go out and primarily do, do traffic, and which creates revenue for the town. Um, I don't know that I would have the time to do that on a, on a regular basis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and as far as any kind of enforcement, but if you had, uh, you know, say like a low-level, a lower-level crime, or maybe even a fraud, I, I could actually look into, um, I believe I would be able to charge that on a, on a state level, as in criminal court, given the county.
Alright. Yeah, 'cause we're always, and mostly our, our issue around here that we deal with is speeding, so we're always looking for, alright, and in the past, I said, God, if we could just get someone, um, licensed, you know, because oftentimes, uh, the towns, they can go to the, even go to the academy, but they have to spend time out in the field, and, and no one really has the time to sponsor them, so, um...
Right, right, so I think the, the car would be the biggest impediment to that. Um, and I know most towns contract with the sheriff's office.
Yep, and, we, we used to do that in the past, and, and, um, and that didn't work out so well for us, but anyways, um, down the road, maybe, uh, we can look at other things, but do anyone else on the board have any questions for, uh?
Oh, he, he, uh, appears to be an excellent candidate, so...
Would you, uh, make a motion, John?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we appoint, uh, Tom Chenet as first constable.
Second.
Callie seconds it, um, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, um, congratulations, Mr. Chenet, to be, to have the constable, and, um, the other thing, oh, we didn't, also, sometimes, every once in a while, dog issues, or, or, um, when the, the, uh, the dog warden is not available, sometimes you might get a call, but, um, not too often.
Sure, yeah, that shouldn't be a, shouldn't be a problem.
We never tell anyone that before we get them appointed, because oftentimes, they'll say, they won't take the appointment if we do, but, uh...
Yes, that was actually one of my, one of my, one of my holdups, was, uh, the animal thing, um, and then I understand that there is an actual dog, dog warden, just Ray, Ray, I chatted with Ray Munn for a bit, um, and he let me know that, so that's, that's great, that's great.
Yeah, we have, uh, Shane Grace, um, on the Common there, and he's our, our pet detective, as we, we say, and, uh, he does a real good job with it, um, but, uh, every once in a while, he's out of town, so sometimes it falls back onto the constable, but anyways, thank you very much again, we appreciate it. If you have any questions, you can reach out to any of us, or anyone down at the office. Um, you'll need to go in at some point and get sworn in, um, from Carolyn, and, uh, I think, uh, she can do that for you, or she might even be able to do it, um, remotely now, I'm not sure how that, how that works.
Sure, sure, we are, we are actually neighbors, so I could probably just coordinate with her, and...
Alright, pop in.
Then I'm, I'm in the...
Alright, sounds good. Well, again, uh, thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yep, thank you very much.
Sasha, could you make sure, uh, could you make sure you give your phone number to Sasha, and she could pass it on to, to all of us?
Yeah, she, she has it, I can certainly send it again, I'll pay you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you all, goodnight.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Alright, well, that's, that's good to fill that position, certainly it looks like someone, or sounds like someone very qualified to do it as well. Um, so let's go ahead, and Sasha, did you have reappointments for both DRB and, uh, Planning Commission?
Yes, Paula Woods is, um, term expires this month, and so does Karen Horn, and they both sent in letters saying that they want him to be reappointed.
Alright, um, so let's deal with, with Paula first. Um, Paula's on the, um, the DRB. Can, uh, does anyone have any objections to reappoint Paula?
Uh, as an alternate, right?
Yes.
Yeah, she's an alternate there.
Nope. I'll make a motion we appoint Paula as an alternate to the DRB, or reappoint, or renew.
Alright, so, alright, thank you, Callie. All in favor of reappointing, um, to the DRB, Paula Woods, vote aye?
Aye.
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 And Sasha, again, for the Planning Commission?
Karen Horn.
Karen Horn, to the Planning Commission. I think Karen would be, uh, uh, great to keep on. Does anyone have any objections to, um, to, uh, reappointing Karen?
No, I make a motion to, uh, reappoint Karen Horn on the Planning Commission.
Second.
Thank you, Callie. Um, so all in favor of appointing, uh, Karen Horn to the PC, Planning Commission, uh, vote aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Alright, um, so again, let's, let's go ahead and move on to reports, communications. Sasha, what do you got for us?
Um, I'll be sending out a curb cut for the rest of the board to sign off on for Otter and William, and that's about it right now.
Alright, Callie, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, I have a couple things.
Alright.
So, I did talk with Stefan, and he's chatting with some of the officers to figure out some stuff that they had that they wanted to talk about regarding the fire department. So when they get their list all organized, we're gonna talk about that.
Alright.
And, as I was watching the news this morning, I saw an interesting advertisement for a basement guy. He does basement stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And I've probably seen it like ten times, but it didn't click, but the first thing I thought of was the town hall in the basement, and if there was anything we could do to make that space a little bit more appealing, because I've been thinking about, great, you've got the kitchen, I mean, if you think about some, like, kids groups down there, it's a great place for them to, like, get messy without being upstairs. You've got the kitchen, the bathrooms, and I guess he does, like, free quotes. I don't know if there's anything he could do with it, but I just saw it, and it popped in my head.
Well, can you, um, can you get some information for the rest of the board, so we can take a look at it, and then maybe we can, uh, if it's something we want to look at, we can get him in to give us a quote on it?
Absolutely.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Uh, Don, or did someone have a question there on that?
Yeah, no, I, I, or just in the communications, I was gonna say that, um, I've been trying to just work along on, on, uh, what we've talked about, actually, two minutes of meetings ago, about trying to get a town hall, um, committee together, um, and so I've sort of just been, you know, kind of going slow at it, only because we're going through the C nineteen process, and how does it really look to start, you know, having some kind of meetings to talk about something like that, and if you were saying, Tom, to be able to have people feel that it's inclusive, you know. But I think even something like this, the basement, which is definitely part of the whole discussion for the, the town hall, and what might get done down there, would certainly come be, make, be part of that discussion of, of how we use the building, and how we can get the basement to be more usable. Um, so anyways, to that end, I'd like some feedback, or some suggestions, 'cause it would be, one thought I had was to see on the committee, if, this town hall committee, if, if I could reach out to the other committees in town, and see if there was a person, any of those people in those committees, who would like to be involved in a town hall committee, as one, as a step towards getting it organized, so I was wondering...
I think, I think that would be a good first step, um, I think we've talked in the past, that it would be nice to start with at least someone from each, uh, each board, Planning Commission, DRB, um, especially, um, so, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
To make the energy, too?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't want to turn away anyone that wants to be, um...
Right.
You know, on the, on any committee, I just don't want it stacked, you know, one way or another, I want it...
Yeah, no, I agree, and I also think that maybe the committee eventually would organize some forums, you know, maybe when we get to finally be, get, that we can have some meetings, and even in different parts of the town, so people could come out and share their thoughts and their opinions.
Pardon me?
You know?
No, I, I, I think that's, uh, something we've all discussed, is, again, uh, it needs to be, uh, discussed throughout the, throughout the town, so no, I think, I think you're starting in the right, um, in the right area, just, you know, go slow, and make sure you're checking in, and, uh, um, with us, with them, but, you know, I, uh, see good things in the, in the future there.
Okay, well, I'll just sort of reach out to some of the committees, and see what kind of feedback I get.
So when you're, when you're, um, so I guess one of the first things I would ask is, so what, when you're asking them, what are you, what, what is your pitch, Don, as far as, you know, we're, you know, we're just looking to turn this building into this, or what, we're, you know...
My pitch to them is, my pitch to them to join the committee will be a free bus ticket to Burlington, and, uh, dinner out.
Well, geez, put me on a committee then.
Uh, what would be my pitch?
Yeah, I mean, what are you selling there, I mean, as far as, you know, we're, you know, um, yeah.
For, for the town to, so that we could start to discuss a way that the library can be a so-called tenant of a, of a town hall that would become maybe a community building, that could be, hold our meetings, still be rentable to, to people who want to rent it for things, and a basement that would be usable from classes to for little kids, or old people, or, or, and such, and dinners, or whatever, you know, that, that we could end up having a building that would be used more than the few times a year.
I, I think that's, that's a good approach, um, you know, more wide, eyes wide open, and, you know, all possibilities, I think there's a lot that can be done with that building, um, and accommodate every, all, all groups.
Yep.
Alright, well, thanks, Don.
Encourage all the bo, the, all the board members, if you can, and you just, you know, go to Seven Days website, and then type in, you know, lib, story on libraries, and they have stories on libraries in the state, you know, just about four or five months ago. Actually, I have it with me here, and it's quite interesting, and, you know, if you read it, you'll see what some other towns have done, um...
Seven Days, Seven Days.
The title of the, it's called Check This Out, that's the title of the article they wrote, and it was in the Seven Days of, uh, uh, can't find the date on this right now, but there you go, um, that's what it was called.
So, I...
It was in, on, on February nineteenth, if anybody wants to check that out, or that's what the story's called, Check This Out. It was in on on February nineteenth, if anybody wants to check that out. Or that's what the story's called, Check This Out.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so, um, John, what's, what do you have for us? I don't know whether you wanna give, um, a run rundown on the, uh, construction, what's going on there?
Do I have it all business or do that now?
Uh, I think you can just go ahead and right through right now. I mean, we're all business next anyway, so go ahead.
Okay, um, so as, uh, pretty much as you you see, we're all set for the voting tomorrow. So they they finished up so that, um, School Street is open, so people will be able to enter our Moretown School and then exit the, uh, uh, School Street. Uh, so they're working in terms of the drainage work, that's where they're working between School Street now and, um, the Moretown, uh, School driveway. Um, they're, where we had, uh, an issue, they found two gas tanks, underground tanks, uh, the Moretown, uh, General Store. And so those have been removed. And as far as I know, and and, uh, I believe Ray has already confirmed this, that, uh, we're set to go on that section as well. So, um, so the sidewalk can can, uh, start in there as well. Um, I know Tom may wanna explain some of the issues on the sidewalk better, but, uh, generally speaking, there there were, uh, quite a few, uh, errors in the sidewalk that they laid down that are all going to, um, be fixed. And, um, I think that's, uh, pretty much, pretty much it.
Yeah, I I don't think we have to go into, um, there was one ADA issue, um, and a couple little spec issues, um, but DuBois is, uh, you know, taking care of it. I've heard back from, uh, GPI tonight, um, and that they were gonna replace the sections that needed to be, um, taken care of, so. Um, I'm pleased with that. And I don't know, Ray, is there anything you wanna say on that?
You know, I know, I think, the only thing I wanna say is, you know, I think, uh, I think we we have, we recognize that we 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 made some mistakes on on the width of the sidewalk and we 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 are gonna replace those. Uh, I do think regarding the the dome, as you might call it, between the store and the next driveway, I I, if you followed the emails, we we exercised, I think, due diligence in trying to get it right before it was poured and and, uh, uh.
I would fully agree on that, Ray.
Yeah, you know, I I just.
I told the guys this morning on that, right, on the on the job is, and I thanked them for picking it up. And I saw Lee's email and that's why I was, what the hell? Why wouldn't
Yeah.
someone just, you're the engineer on the job, measure that out. I mean, I'm not a
Yeah, yeah.
uh, an engineer and I looked at it and I said, Jesus Christ, I mean, kids in town would love it, uh, for life, you know, but that doesn't fly.
That's right, anyways. Um. It's it's an issue that's gonna be resolved and, you know, um, you know, I just wanna emphasize it, uh, that, yeah, we do recognize we did make some mistakes. Uh, you know, you know, it it may be middle of June, but for us, it's the middle of April as far as my crew has not been working, you know, steadily for two months. They're they're coming off and a lot of them coming off the layoff. They're not as sharp as they should be. Uh, I'm just throwing that out there that, you know, there's there's a lot of issues here, but we we stand by our product and certainly, uh, we want to leave this town, uh, happy. Everybody should be happy and, uh, we're gonna get that.
Absolutely, I agree that, uh, you will. And, uh, again, I, you know, we all, and you've heard me say it many times, we all make mistakes, do things sometimes that we, you know, are up to our our standards, but it's how we all come behind and 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 correct those mistakes is the the difference. And you guys are are doing that and even taking some responsibility for an area where I don't think that, um, it lies on you and that's that that, uh, that will jump. But, um, I appreciate it anyways, getting it taken care of.
Yep, uh, I I think the pipe, the pipe crew has done well. Uh, we hope to be out of be out of there by the end of this month and and that will reduce the, you know, the big traffic thing is obviously that that part of the job is takes up a lot of space, but once they're out of town, uh, it it should improve traffic dramatically through town and and certainly, you know, that'd be a lot less people. Uh, a lot will happen towards the end of the month that, uh, will get us out of town and
Yeah.
almost almost.
I mean, we, uh, I think we all knew going in that it was gonna be a very, uh, congested and busy area, um, you know, and it is what it is. So everyone, I think, is doing the best they can and, um, you know, will continue just moving forward and, uh, everyone working towards a good product.
And I might, uh, when I, uh, saw Aaron Hunt today and they're very happy with the work, uh, that was done back behind the fire station. So I was glad to hear that, so.
Are those the people in, um, Meredith's Old House?
Yes, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, we should send those people when this is done, send them a something. I mean, to let us tear their bushes out and all that, I think, was was quite nice. Um.
Yeah, and, um, um, excuse me. Also, um, um, I just lost my train of thought for a minute. Uh, it'll come back to me.
That's all right. I do it all the time, John, so anyways, um, Ray, do you have anything else that you, um, wanted to share at all? Whether it's a matter of anything else?
Oh, we got a topic.
Or anything else?
Yeah, I got. Yeah, a couple things I did wanna mention, uh, when we were talking about the, uh, the town halls and it's still on on the agenda, I think, to replace the, uh, uh, put that that trench drain in in front of the rear door.
Yep, yep.
Didn't get done last year. I I think we recognize that that was a major problem, was the water getting over the sill. I think that's still on the docket to get done this summer. Uh, and that should help things dramatically in the basement. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that's still on the on the table.
Yeah, that's good to know. And make sure Martin, uh, you've talked to him recently about that, Ray?
I, you know, I didn't think of it till we were just talking about it tonight, but I will, I'll definitely talk to Martin about it.
So, um, we can take that that new shiny excavator of our excavator and use it down there in the middle of town for people.
Yeah, yep. Um, and the other thing, uh, was, uh, we had talked, uh, earlier this year about, uh, developing some sort of, uh, village sewer, uh, commission or committee to look into that. And I still have that on my agenda. I just, I I I'm just waiting for us to, or waiting for the COVID thing to clear up a little bit more where we could have a committee that actually can get together, see each other and talk this over rather than try to start and browse over the phone.
Yep, no, I agree. Remember, uh, Clark Amadon was was, um,
Yeah, I definitely got Clark on, Clark and and both, Clark and Don have both, uh, expressed some interest in, uh, in, uh, you know. So I I'm gonna start with those two guys, but again, I'd like to wait till we can all, we can sit down and talk about this where we're all comfortable about it, face to face.
No, I think that's that's a good idea. That's fair. All right, um.
Okay, also, uh, yeah, what I wanted to, uh, mention is that, um, I actually, um, hadn't received these emails that went, were out in Ju- June eighth, um, where DuBois did question, uh, that bump. And, uh, and basically Doug Doug Henson, uh, explained why he planned it that way. Um, and so, you know, moving forward, I mean, Doug's made so many, has made, there's been so many errors in the plan, um, and, you know, not showing spring lines and things like that. It's it's been very difficult. Do everything that that he says. And if there's, if, you know, if there's a disagreement in what he says, you know, let's 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 address it, you know, and and, you know, not wait until a week later, which is, you know, I finally had the email forwarded to me, um, but we, you know, we could have addressed that bump sooner, you know?
Yeah, no, I, and what, and the answer was a very flip answer by, uh, Doug to, uh, to Lee. You know, just, you know, I put it there so it's safe for a sidewalk. That's why it's a sidewalk or something like that. Uh, it was it was inappropriate and that's where, but Lee should have stepped up at that point and measured it or 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 taken him just a closer look at it.
Right, yeah.
But, um, anyways, we're we're over that. But, yeah, so I I also saw, John, where you, uh, were able to get, um, Pat Travers, who's now a GPI, to send out an email to make sure that you're on all, uh, lists. So
Right.
hopefully going forward that does not happen again.
Yep, good, okay.
All right, so, um, the I don't have anything except I, um, before we move forward, we just need to approve the minutes, uh, for for June first?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June first.
All right, thank you. Callie, you still awake? All right, thank you. Um, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes for June first? Please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So let's, uh, now we'll move into to all business. Uh, so Neil, thank you for being patient with us.
Um, yep, you're, you're on, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
We can. So, uh, Neil, you, um, everyone, I'm sure, received, uh, from Sasha, uh, what she, uh, forwarded us from Neil, but so go ahead, Neil, why don't you, uh, take the floor? You got a few minutes here.
Yes, great. And so how's this connection, by the way? Cause I know that Johnny mentioned, uh, last time I talked, uh, it was a little funky. And it's actually, I have to say, I got a little bit of an echo on my end. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not too bad. It's much better than last time. Last time, I think I had unmuted you because it was.
I'm I'm still an echo.
Yeah, I kept.
Uh, yeah, it's a it's an internet phone and, um, but I I I can, I I can actually give you guys a ring back if you want, or I can just go.
No, this is fine. I think, I don't know, I I can hear you all right. If it gets too bad, we'll have you on.
Sure, all right. Yeah, so, uh, and I I hopefully all you folks had, uh, an opportunity to read the, uh, the letter that I sent you. Um, I I spoke to you guys back in March, right when we had gone into the COVID lockdown. And I had, uh, gathered up, uh, signatures right before, uh, before the, uh, social distancing hit, uh, regarding, um, uh, uh, holding a meeting, uh, for Moretowners to vote on whether or not to withdraw from the consolidated school district. And I think what we, at the time, uh, not really knowing what was gonna be happening, was we talked about, um, sometime this summer getting together. Um, and I know that at the meeting two weeks ago, you you folks took a vote in no confidence, uh, in 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 our superintendent. And unfortunately, um, the the vote did not go that way. It was, um, it was nine to five, uh, seventy percent to thirty percent with a weighted vote, uh, in favor of, uh, renewing the superintendent's contract, although they did reduce it from, uh, from two years to one. Um, so I just wanted to come back, uh, in in front of you and 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 see, uh, given where we're at now with the pandemic, if there were any thoughts about, um, about moving forward. I I would, I would urge, uh, movement on on the on the, uh, petition, if possible, and just going over from what I said last time. So the the process is fairly easy to to start, uh, but then it's, uh, and the the process in a nutshell is, uh, a meeting has to be held, uh, in Moretown. And if you get fifty-one percent of those present voting at that meeting, uh, saying that they want to withdraw from the district, at that point, it gets certified to the Secretary of State's office. And the Secretary of State schedules a, uh, a simultaneous election for the other five towns to vote on ratification. And this is the the hard part, because you have to get fifty-one percent from all five towns separately in order to get the the withdrawal, um, ratified. And at that point, it goes to the, back to the State Board of Education. Uh, according to the statute, and there's there hasn't been a lot of, um, really, there's only, there's only one district downtown that has take, has has tried this so far. And they're kinda right in the middle of the process right now. Uh, but it goes back to the State Board of Education. The statute seems to say that if you get a ratified withdrawal, then that town is out. And the only thing the State Board of Education is gonna consider is whether or not to let the consolidated district continue to operate or if it's, they're gonna dissolve it. Um, the, you know, practically speaking, the the big thing that's gonna come up if we vote to withdraw, uh, and certainly if we move to and and we successfully ratify, is gonna be that the consolidated district now owns the school. They, you know, we we sold to them for a dollar, uh, back in two thousand and sixteen. So, um, so one of the things, uh, another thing I was suggesting was, you know, putting together perhaps some folks to, uh, to start the process, negotiating that. If if and when we, I would say, if we got to, uh, the Moretown meeting and we were we're gonna be having the ratification vote with the five towns and then probably definitely it'd be good to start approaching the consolidated, uh, uh, board and seeing if, uh, if they can work out some terms as far as selling the school back. Um, but it's not, I mean, you know, things don't look great for Moretown or or for Facetown. Uh, there is a, there is a break hanging through twelve plan that the 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 board approved, uh, a couple months ago. And basically, they're just, so initially, what the, I mean, the the board chair said in the press that if there, people wanted to, uh, object to the plan, which involves moving the fifth and sixth graders from Moretown up to Crossit and the seventh and eighth, uh, from Humms to Crossit, that they should vote against the budget, which of course happened, uh, quite handily. And they're, they immediately, uh, backpedaled and said, well, we're not really sure why the, there could be all sorts of reasons for voting no. So the the long and short of it is, is that the, you know, our our position in this consolidated district is still very precarious. Uh, I I definitely think that regaining self-determination would be the best thing for Moretown. Um, and so I'm I'm, one thought that I had, and I have no idea if this is really practical or not, would be that if tomorrow's budget vote goes down, that if there's a ratification, if there's a, uh, a withdrawal vote from Moretown, that potentially the Secretary of State could piggyback the the five-town ratification vote on the next budget revote. I have no idea whether that would really work logistically or not, but it does seem like if it would work, it would be a decent way of, you know, pairing those two things up and and getting folks near the town.
Sure, that. I love.
Yeah, anyways, that's, yeah.
That might be a little, uh, short timeline there.
Right, right.
So let me get some input from the, uh, the rest of the board, um.
Yep.
So we've, I mean, Neil, Neil told a story of what's going on, um, and John, I know you're paying a lot of attention to this. What what is your thoughts, John? What are you?
Well, I mean, I'm I'm certainly open to that idea, especially since, uh, Mecca is no longer part of the district. And my understanding there was that with the new contract, um, uh, health insurance would have been offered to the employees of Mecca. And there's no way Mecca could have afforded, could have, would have been able to afford that. So that's the main reason that they withdrew. So now, they're not even there. So, I mean, there's, you know, and the fact that they already want to move five and six, um, I I think Moretown School is is in a bigger danger now than they have been in the past.
John, have you been paying much attention to this at all?
Um, yeah, I've been trying to weed my way through it. And in my sense, from just what I've been reading and hearing, it sounds to me like the budget is gonna pass tomorrow. I don't think it's not gonna pass. There's been a lot of people talking in favor of passing it because I thought that was gonna give us one year to, um, meet talk and for people to figure out what the next step is based on what, you know, this budget passing represents and that they're not gonna do anything this year other than regroup and see where we're going. So am I getting that message wrong?
No, no, you're you're getting that right. And I mean, I I agree. I think the budget will pass tomorrow, um, but that doesn't mean that we're. um, but that doesn't mean that we're, we're safe, you know, we, basically, the way I see it is we, we have a year to, you know, really take a look at this. Uh, we're not as much under the gun as we were before when, if the first budget had passed, you know, I mean, we, we would have lost our fifth and sixth graders. So at least we've got this, uh, year of breathing room, um, so I, I think we could, you know, slowly start the ball rolling.
Yeah, I, I, I can speak to that too briefly, Johnny, so, uh, you know, for whatever reason, the, the consolidated board decided to link the budget vote to this idea of, of moving the Moretown fifth and sixth graders, uh, which really is part of a separate vote that they took, uh, which is part of this, like I said, that pre-K through, uh, twelve plan. Um, the, so it was voted down, so like John's saying, we have the year, but the, the, the pre-K through twelve plan was never, uh, that wasn't up for vote at, at town meetings, and that didn't get rejected. So, I mean, they, they just had a, a, a committee meeting of the committee that, that's doing this thing, and they're basically moving right forward, uh, just setting the same thing up for twenty twenty-one. So they're talking about getting the Moretown fifth and sixth graders into the pods and all that, and, and getting a vote on a addition across it, uh, it's that they pushed over a year. But really, it's the same plan, it's just not happening this year anymore, like John, like John's saying. We really have the same, the threat of the same thing happening. Uh, it's, it's gonna, it's off the table, so the budget tomorrow, so, you know, it's definitely not gonna happen this fall, which is what was the proposal back in March, but it is still, it's still very much, um, you know, in, in the works there.
But then if that budget to do that next year gets turned down, wouldn't you think that that would, that gets the message?
This, so, I, I mean, basically.
Well, they haven't got the message by now, another, another vote may wanna make a difference, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right, absolutely, yeah. They're, yeah, they're, they're really determined to, to do this thing, to show that as a consolidated district, they can, you know, close, close schools in the valley and, um, you know, save, yeah, so I.
All right, so we need.
Turn it to that, oh, yeah.
Well, the, the other thing to consider is that, you know, what's been forgotten here is originally, there was gonna be a bond vote in June, you know, to make these improvements. Um, and Harwood can't keep waiting to make these improvements, so they've got that to deal with too. I don't see how they can push forward with a pre-K to twelve plan without taking care of these improvements to, to Harwood. Um, but, you know, is it, how do you.
Isn't that, John, what someone's surplus is?
I, I mean, I don't trust, I don't trust anything that comes out of that board, and so, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? So.
Isn't this, excuse me, isn't the surplus that they have, the maintenance surplus or something, are they gonna use that for some of the infrastructure work they need to do, the roof or something, there's some stuff, the science department needs some work, and the roof or whatever?
Uh, I don't know, I didn't get, I didn't get that feeling. I didn't think they could do anything without a bond vote.
No, but they have a million and a half.
Oh, without a vote, without, let's say, the, without a vote.
Maintenance surplus, they have a million and a half maintenance surplus, I thought, that they were gonna do some, you know, infrastr- some work on the, on Harwood.
They may, I mean, I, I, and I haven't seen that, but even if they, they took, you know, half that money or, or two-thirds of it, it's not close to what the, 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 the infrastructure needs are for that school that's there. Uh, I mean, it would be.
Yeah, I think one, one of the, one of the folks, uh, who was paying attention to this, another folk, uh, person told me is that, uh, they're actually talking about using some of those maintenance funds for the temporary, for the, uh, pods, the temporary housing for students, uh, that they would need in twenty twenty-one, so that they wouldn't need a, 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 a vote on that otherwise. But that, that just, that came from, uh, just from somebody else who's paying attention to this stuff, who actually went, uh, attended, you know, by Zoom this, um, committee meeting that they had last week before the full board meeting, so.
Well, they can't do that.
Yeah, and I mean, as far as the, as far as the bond vote, what you really have here is, is Act forty-six was like a perfect storm, because, you know, this, this bond vote for Harwood has been desperate for years now, but what you have is a board that's just really pretty much incapable of doing anything, and it, you know, there's fourteen of them, they're just, they're split like Republicans and Democrats, and they take forever to just, you know, work out who gets to talk for five minutes, they, so, so the bond vote has just suffered and suffered and su- I don't know what the plan is for, for at this point, right, but, uh, I can tell you, one of the things is they, they are really, they're sort of like paralyzed in doing things in any sort of effective way, because the board, it's just a really screwy situation, it's honestly, it just shouldn't have never happened, but. Uh, and John, I'm sure you can attest this too, when they, they, they really, they, they can't move, they, you know, they're just, they're too div- divided and stuff.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, well, there's no leadership, and they had an opportunity to change that leadership, and, and they failed miserably.
Yeah.
Um, again, and, uh.
But I mean, he, you know, the given pretty much is that we eventually would lose, at, at the very least, five and six, and I'm totally in favor of leaving Moretown School intact, and I would like to see how the townspeople feel. So I think it's, it's time to, to explore it and get a feeling for how our community and town feels.
All right, so why don't we?
I just wanted to say a couple things, or.
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, so, uh, again, uh, I'm with, with you on that, I'd like to see those Moretown schools stay, uh, but it seems like we have a lot of work to do, or somebody does, as far as breaking away from the district, as far as costs, where, what's gonna happen with our students, uh, and are the students gonna benefit from this? I just think there's, I, I don't see a vote this year, in my opinion, that, that, I don't see a vote this year unless, unless somebody does a lot of research. Um, I mean, I, I wouldn't be comfortable betting on something without knowing all the, uh, the, the total cost of things, because it, it seems like the cost is gonna be really expensive pulling out of the district.
Yeah, no, Ray, you make some good points, I mean, this would be like what we're complaining about to that board, they're making decisions without knowing what costs and, and what ramifications are to our students, um, so.
Yeah, and I, I had hoped, I had hoped to come to you folks with, with some more research about that. Um, my computer decided to crash on me first thing this morning, and took me about six hours to get back up and running, so I really, I don't have anything, unfortunately, but it's definitely on my shirt list is to, is to look into this some more and to reach out to the folks down in, uh, Wyndham Southwest, or Halifax, and Eastborough, where they're undergoing this, that they're, they're in the process, and, and get you guys some, some, uh, you know.
Why don't you, Neil, why don't you, if you can continue to, to do that, John, why don't, uh, we, we need to discuss and we need to figure out how to put something going forward, so we can, so we can start getting a little bit of input from, from townspeople, but, um, like you said, to raise the point, we need to get, um, you know, what we're, what we're getting into. And I know Ron, uh, Shems has looked into a little bit of that as well, so, um, I think, I think now, like you said, everyone, we need to, uh, to start beating this drum, um, you know, we, we kinda see the future, so let's, uh, move forward by, um, I don't wanna put any firm dates, but, uh, you know, assurance on this board that we are going to just, you know, start discussing this at some point in the near future, get town input, but we need to just, I, I guess we need to put a map together how we wanna do this.
Yes, exactly.
Um, and I think if John and I, um, maybe working, talk to Ron a little bit, and get some advice from him, we could put, uh, something together for everyone, um, and then we could start to hold some, uh, meetings, or it depends on what he says, and, uh, uh, but yeah, I think it's something we should look at.
And I can definitely put, you know, I can get on that, and I, I should be able to have something for you guys before, um, before the next meeting in July sixth, uh, so you have, you know, something to look at it. Lisa and, uh, Kristen both reached out to me after I sent the letter to you and, and asked to be kept in the loop, so I, I can make that information available to them as well.
Good, well, thank you, Neil, we appreciate all your.
That'll be helpful.
Your, uh, help on that side, and you can reach out to the, the southern, uh, counties as well.
Sure.
Where, where do I, I'm just curious, where do our, our two reps stand on, on this?
On the issue specifically of withdrawal?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I did, I copied them on the letter to, to the select board, and I, like I said, I heard back from both of them, and what they said was that they would like to be kept in the loop, that they would like to, uh, to see, you know, when they come up with it, or, yeah.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
Um, you know, they, of course, they, they both voted, um, uh, to not renew the superintendent's contract, uh, it was, it was them.
Yeah.
The two Facetown reps and one from Warren, and that was it, um.
Well, Tom, don't you think it would be good if we, going forward, as we figure out what this process is, if we met with our two, had also got a chance to talk with our two reps and just.
Yeah, maybe that, I think that's a great idea.
If they have meetings and, what's that?
Maybe the next, I think that's a great idea, maybe the next meeting on July sixth, we can invite them to come, uh, and give us some perspective.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to be, they've been at some meetings, and they could maybe help us understand a little bit more, right?
Yep, and they may have some ideas of, you know, going forward, what, what's the plan, so, no, I think that's a very good idea, um.
Yeah.
I'll give myself a June thirtieth deadline, just 'cause, uh, you know, we've got the fourth holiday there, uh, to get everybody something, so that, uh, you know, folks can take a look at something before you get together on the sixth.
Sounds good, Neil, thank you, and, um.
I also, I was also curious, um, Neil, 'cause I didn't see any mention of this anywhere, uh, after the vote, but is there anything, any discussion on the, uh, conflict of interest between Jeremy Tredeak and, um, Michael Frank?
Uh, you know, it's funny, I actually was, I'm just working on this email to our, to the board chair, uh, right before this meeting, and so it wouldn't have ended up being dispositive of the issue in any event, because the, the two of them were fifteen percent of the vote, and like you said, it was seventy to thirty.
Right.
Um, the, having said that, the, the board chair just ignored the, the conflict policy, um. I was, I was at the meeting, you know, by Zoom, ready to, uh, make my little spiel, uh, and, uh, so essentially, it's like a two-step process, there, the, so the, the people who I've suggested, I've complained against are, are supposed to say whether they think there's conflict or not, and then there's, uh, informal hearing where we both get to be heard, and, and she worked it out so that they got to speak and I didn't. And I was sitting there hitting the star nine button over and over again, and, uh, you know, I just, I got, so I had, I had nothing, and they, and, and that was, that was that, um.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it was, you know, they didn't follow the appearance of conflict standard, which, uh, is the standard that I was, uh, com- using on the complaint, and, uh, yeah, it was really, it was, it was honestly, it was very typical of how it goes with this board, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was just kind of a kangaroo court or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
And like I said, it wouldn't have even made a difference, I just, it was just, it was just.
It's the principle.
It was just more, more the same.
Yeah, exactly, it's the principle of the thing, sure.
All right, well, again, uh, thank you, Neil, I appreciate your, uh, your time and your, your efforts on this, and thanks for, uh, for bringing this back to the board.
Sure, and thank you guys.
Thank you, Neil. All right, thanks, Neil.
All right, take care, all right, bye now.
All right, so, um, so is there any other, uh, old business below that, uh, we can talk about? Sasha, um, Linda Van Tine, did you, uh, have an opportunity, Sasha, to get, um, information on Van Tine?
I have talked to her twice, um, she is working on getting the financials that you guys need.
Okay.
I will reach out to her again.
Very good, well, the, you know, it's, it's her, um, um, you know, the owners is on her, so don't, uh, spend too much time on it. Johnny, did you have a question?
I just didn't, I just had one other thing to chime in about the, um, the school, and I don't know if this would be helpful or not, as far as when we have it, uh, July sixth, but the other gentleman who we've heard a lot from, who seems to be pretty knowledgeable, uh, his name's Peter Leyland, I think it is, or?
Langella.
Uh, what is it?
Langella.
Yeah, I mean, would, would that be, I mean, would that be, uh, someone we should also, um.
We, we should have to.
Ask to join, or just wait till we get further along?
I think I wanna, let's, let's go with the, uh, the school board, uh, members first,
Yeah, yeah.
and then get another, get a perspective, it's good sometimes to get different perspectives on different things, that way people learn.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, yeah, okay.
All right, but, uh, good idea, thank you. Um, any other old business?
Yeah, um, where are we at with, uh, Trail Seventeen?
Where are we at with it, I think?
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, you know, we have this property, and we have no access to it.
How's that?
And, why's that?
I, I mean, how is we don't have any access to it?
Well, not in the, not in the new trail.
But it needs to be cut out, is that what you're saying?
Well, my understanding is it, it was never finalized, um, and that Ron has some, some work to do and so on. I think Sasha has a whole file on it that, that Cheryl gave to her.
I've asked about this, and I asked Ron's quite some time ago, um, and he indicated that it was all taken care of. Sasha, do you have stuff that's not complete?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can follow up again with Ron and see what, what he says again.
Because remember, I, I had you do that, I think, John, my understanding is, remember, everything had, we had gone through everything with, um, the, the Blodgets and the, the Trail Swamp, and then it was, it was appealed.
Yeah.
So we did everything, and then it was appealed at the, the eleventh hour by the timber group.
Right.
And, so everything, we had, everything had been done, we were just, at that point, just waiting for the days to count off, and then it was appealed, so once the timber group dropped their suit, um.
Yeah.
It's, there's nothing else to do, because of the, um, now that appeal time is, has, uh, gone out.
Okay, so, so bottom line, the, we've thrown up the, the old portion?
We did, we threw up the old portion, uh, quite some time ago.
I mean, that's, that's what I thought, um, and, um.
I had, I had the same questions, um, I don't know, it was in Jan- sometime, uh, 'cause I just wanted to make sure that it, you know, we could, uh, take possession of it, and, uh, Ron looked into it at that point, said, no, everything was all taken care of, but let's, um, before we turn, you know, everyone loose on the property, let's make sure that, uh, all, uh, Ts have been crossed and Is dotted, because we know it's a very tou- tou- touchy area over there.
Right, right, okay.
All right.
So if, you know, if in fact that's okay, um, then, um, I actually, um, have been involved with, uh, the Vermont Master Naturalist Program, and it's sponsored by UVM, Alliance for Half Earth, and, um, uh, Friends with Mad River, and so I thought that that would be a good, a good project to do a natural community study there, um, which would be part of the foundation of the land management plan. So, you know, I was hoping to, you know, move forward with that, as long as we have proper access to the property.
All right, well, let's, let's, uh, be sure, but again, based on my past conversations, that's, that's where it was, um.
Okay.
Uh, but let's, uh, let's really be sure of that, I know, and maybe Cheryl, I'll check with her as well.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, I.
My understanding was that.
I did actually speak with Cheryl, and she, she seemed to think that it wasn't.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, we'll, uh, ask everyone to produce their documents of wh- why or why not, um.
Right.
Hmm, all right.
So I can, I can check with Cheryl Lynn too, because it would be recorded.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I thought this was done to you.
Not done.
I did record the documents.
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, Sasha, if you could do us a favor and maybe, um, just send a copy of that around?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and, um, yeah, I just also wanted to remind you that, um, yeah, I know that, uh, tonight, Steve Robbins talked about the planning commission, talking about the, uh, forest management plan and so on, and, um, just wanted to remind everybody, the select board is in charge of these properties. that the select board is in charge of these properties and so, you know, we should, we should take control of that. And, you know, and, you know, last time, the last plan, Don might remember, he, he was chair then, um, was, um, you know, it was a, a combined effort of the select board, uh, school and, um, planning commissions. And, you know, I, I think that's, that's where we're, what we're looking at now with, you know, to have this committee. So, um, so I'll, I'll reach out, you know, especially for the older one. The, the new one can wait a little bit. Um, especially if I am able to put together this, um, thing with the Vermont Master Naturalist Program. As long as everybody, you know, agreeable to something like that.
Yeah, no, I think that would be a good, uh-
It would be a, a good, a great study, so-
Yeah, I think it would be great. I think there's people in town who would like to, to do it as well.
Exactly, and that's, you know, once, like, again, I've kind of been holding off for the COVID nineteen thing, but, you know, once we're able to, you know, do more things, it would be nice to, um, you know, get the town involved, have a, have a, a meeting and see, you know, see who wants to, to help out and see what their intentions is. You know, I mean, it's town land and everybody should have some input.
Yep, sounds good. Well, we have, um, moved through, uh, quite a bit of stuff tonight. Is there any, um, any other new business that anyone has?
Well, no, I, I saw, there was one old business that we have, just a, a quick update other than, if, if it's just what-
Sure, what was the headline?
The email that's not, I was just curious about the, the bridge. Has anyone heard anything other than the email that we got from Sasha, from the lady saying they were checking with the schools?
No.
That's it?
Still, still in that, uh, that situation.
What's that?
No, we're still, we're still in that situation. Still checking to see what's going on with the school. Um, although I think we know a little bit better now, um, since it sounds like school's going to be in session come September.
Right.
Um-
It would seem to me that they're getting awful close to the point of, you know, that they've, of not being able to start it. I mean, here it is, the, it's the middle, it's almost July first.
Well, they've start, they actually have started. Uh, they, they just hadn't planned on, in terms of the, um, uh, the dates when they would actually be closing the bridge. That hasn't been finalized, but I mean, they're, they're starting to do all the preliminary work. There's a lot of stuff that has to be done before they actually close the bridge.
Well, I think, again-
So you, you think they've started that? That, that they will close?
Well, I, I believe they, we just don't have the exact date. Uh, I'm right, aren't I Ray? Isn't that what you understand?
Well, I mean, there is, there's work going on in the background and I think getting some middles in, getting the, uh, all their steel in, uh, that we're not seeing. And the last I heard, the bridge was starting in August on site. So I, I don't know, you know, I, you know, I'm not completely up to speed on every, all conversations, but I, I don't think anything's happening on site till August.
Okay. Although they have their trailer there, right?
Yeah, they moved that in, uh, you know, maybe a month ago, um-
Yeah.
And, but again, I think they're, they were waiting on materials, um, and, uh, you know, hopefully, to John's point, I hope they don't decide to put it off another year, but I don't see them at this point doing that, um, so, yes. Um, but as you can see, I mean Sasha, when you get a chance on, uh, tomorrow, if you could send out another, uh, email just for another update on that, see if there's any other decisions being made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, um, and then, um, one more thing, actually it's back on old business. I, I apologize, I was mistaken. Um, the Morton Elementary School, uh, ERP grant, um, we still will be responsible for some of that cost, that we would be splitting with the, the school board.
How much is that John? It's not very much, is it?
Uh, I, seventeen thousand?
But split, right?
Yeah.
What, what was that for John again?
Uh, so that, that's for the, um, the engineering studies of the, of the, the plan, the Morton Elementary School work.
Are you talking about the park?
The, the drainage work, yeah.
So, do we have a, do we have a contract for that defining what their scope of work is?
You mean a contract for who's doing the work? I mean, in, in terms of the, um, in terms of the, the plan, um, that's, oh boy, being done. Yeah, we did choose, choose a firm for that.
That's the firm out of, um-
Just out of the valley there, uh, um-
Yeah, uh, let me just-
I just, um, I, I, I'm quite sure that they are not professional engineers. And so that's why I'm concerned on what they're doing, uh, and what they're going to give us. Are they just going to give us some general plan that we again have to hire a pro, a professional engineer to finish the work? I'm just, I'm just concerned that they, I don't believe have a professional engineer on staff.
No, they, they don't. What, it's Watershed Consulting Associates?
Yes, that's right, that's-
Yeah, but they, they work jointly with, uh, I'd have, I'd have to pull, pull that, I'm trying to find-
I just would hate to see if we had seventeen thousand dollars spent on just a, a document that says what we need to do without having an actual, uh, engineered plan for that kind of money.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I don't think-
I mean, because I could sit here and, and, and for a lot less than seventeen thousand dollars and, and write a report.
Right, give us directions. We want to know how to, my understanding is the plan was going to be, all right, this is what the plan is, um, engineered to, all right, we need a three inch tree to, um-
Yeah.
This is the, you know, the tubing or whatever.
Yeah.
All right, let me see. So John, can we check on that and see what-
Yeah, I'm pulling, I'm actually pulling it up, uh, pulling it up right now, um, they've got that in here. Yeah, the, uh, the engineer, it's, uh, S E Group?
Okay.
Is, is, are, are you familiar with them?
S E Group?
E Group.
S E Group, um, but it's not really, uh-
Okay.
I don't recognize that right away. Uh, I don't know, maybe if you, if I saw it or you texted to me, whatever, but it, you know, I just-
Well, why don't I, why don't I do, um, I thought we all had gotten a copy of their, their plan, but let me, uh, let me do that. Let me email you the, um, their plan, the Watershed Consulting.
Yeah, okay. I, I just, again, um, you know, I'm, so we have got the, we have, we've got a contract with Watershed.
Correct.
All signed. Okay.
But wasn't that, that was covered under that grant John, was, did we have, that's what she explained to us, the, um, I don't know what, how much was it?
The Central Vermont Planning?
Yeah, that, but that grant, that grant covered, uh, thirty percent of the project.
Right.
And-
So-
Then basically the, the rest of the project is what, what we're, we would have to, uh,
Right, but that, I mean, the, the grant covered, I thought it was-
It was a thirty percent grant.
Didn't that cover the whole engineering part?
Was that the total project John or just the engineer, uh, engineering part?
Oh, no, they, they, the, well, the, the design, it's called the Morton Elementary School Stormwater Mitigation Final Design. So that's, that's the design plan.
Okay, so, so once they have a plan and, uh, then we decide to go out the bid, whatever, does the thirty percent also cover the project cost?
No.
Thirty percent of the project cost?
No.
Oh.
Just, just this initial design. And I, I would like to try and find out, and I don't know if Sasha, uh, knows this or not, but I mean, basically the, the whole, whole thing here, you know, we were looking at this, the grant that Cheryl got originally and then the stormwater thing hit, you know, at the catch basins and everything, and I don't know where the rest of it is. I mean, do you, at this point, um, Tom, do you know?
I have not.
So we had like, you know, the whole project was like seven hundred thousand or something like that, maybe even more?
Right, right. So we had, we had never put it out to bid. We just, I know that they put it in a budget number of it, uh-
Yeah.
But I, I do know when we hired Greenmount Engineering that they had designed a stormwater system for the school and everything that, uh, and I, if they're just going to take those plans and make them their plans and charge us seventeen thousand dollars for work that we were already done, it just, it, I don't know, it just, maybe it's too late to even go and go that direction, but it, it just seems like, uh, I, I just don't know what we're getting out of this other group. I, I don't know for sure. But anyway.
Well, that's, what it really, what it really does is it, it takes into consideration, um, um, you know, things like, uh, a rain, rain garden and, um, you know, different things to, to mitigate, uh, stormwater. So it's more than just the, the entire drainage.
I under, yeah, I, I understand that part of it, uh, John. But there's, along with that part, there is a certain amount of engineering that has to be done to make sure that we have the right size pipes and, uh, so forth, that I'm not sure that these people are, are, have the qualification to do all that.
All right, wait a minute, wait a minute. I pulled up another, another one. Okay, now we have civil engineering associates.
Okay.
Civil engineering associates and the, let's see, I just found, uh, uh, his name is Marshall.
No, okay, so, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with them. I mean, they're, they are, uh, they are a civil engineering group and certainly they're, um, they're capable of doing the, the engineering part of the project. I'm just, again, uh, you know, wondering, you know, if we're just duplicating some of the work if it's already been done. But anyway, they, they, they've got them on board and I guess, uh, you know, I guess at this point, we're just going to go forward with it. It just, it just strikes me as a lot of money, uh-
But I think before we-
But I, I, I thought though that, that, I thought that there was some, some issues with Greenmount Engineering, um, uh, with, and I, I might, might be wrong, I'm, I'm going back, we're going back so many years now, but that, that, uh, the, the state wasn't, you know, in, in favor of, they had some, some difficulty.
No, it came down to, to, to do, to do work for the Central Vermont Planning Commission, you have to be on a list if you're going to use their money and they're not on that list.
Uh.
Uh, that, that, that only means if we're going to use their money. If, if they're only paying thirty percent of seventeen thousand dollars, which is five thousand dollars, and we've already spent fifteen thousand dollars on engineering plans, we're going to spend now another thirteen thousand dollars for work that's already been done. Even with the Central Vermont Planning Commission money, we're not really gaining anything from their money because, uh, we're still back to where we were again, I guess.
Yeah, well, actually it's, it's, uh, the whole project cost is thirty-two thousand for the plan.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, I, I guess I'd like to see their proposal again and certainly, we'll have to see what their plans look like.
Okay.
At some point, I, you know, I, I know it's, hate to drag this out, I just, uh, it just occurred to me, you know, talking about this, you know, we're just spending a lot of money on, on plans and we're not giving, we're not going, the, the construction part of it is lacking.
Yeah, and I, Ray and, and, uh, John, John, if you can look back into your, what you have there, because I think we, we talked about this, um, before, I can't recall, like you said, it's been a while, but, um, I know there was reasons why we chose to go the direction we were, um, and not to spend money after, good money after that, but-
Yeah, because, I mean, we, you know, Tom, Cheryl and I, you know, chose Watershed Consulting and, and the board did vote on it.
Yes, yep.
But, but prior to that John, John, there was, it was quite some time ago when we, um, decided, you know, that we had to go in this direction. I mean, I'm, I'm talking a couple of years ago.
I, I can't, I can't hear you, you're fading out.
I said, I think it was a couple of years ago or, or, or a year and a half ago that we decided that, that we had to go a different direction. I mean, this has been something that's been-
Right, right.
-discussed. So if you can bring up some of your notes or get a, um, you know, reasons why we went in the right-
Yeah, well, and I'll talk to Cheryl about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because I don't like the idea of, again, respending money, but I think there was, there were some reasons why we, we, we done this, but I can't recall exactly why.
Yeah, I'll have to do some research on my own as well, uh, um, I know we had this discussion, parts of this discussion before.
Yeah, I just can't remember where we went and there were different reasons and, and why we've, we've kind of gone back and forth. Some of it, again, because of the, the catch basins changed things for us as well, but, uh, so we can look into that and we can get some better answers there. So, all right, um-
I think, you know, I've been thinking about it, it had to do with something about the phosphate, um, and how it was being handled. And something along those lines anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think you're on the right track there, Ray. I think that's, that's exactly.
Because there was an acceptable amount of phosphate and this-
Yeah.
You know, they couldn't always handle it or something.
The, the kickoff meeting for the whole thing was last week, so I just-
Okay.
All right, well, let's, um, move forward. Uh, John, if you can put some more information together and-
Okay.
get together with Ray, um, so you can come back with, uh, an explanation for all of this so that we're both, we're all on the same page.
Yep.
All right, um, any other, uh, new business? All right, um, so is there anything else, anyone, otherwise, uh, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you Callie, I'll say with an aye. Aye.
Bye.
Thank you everyone and, uh-